Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for April 13th, 2015. And as senior member of the board, I will open the meeting. I have to confess, if you told me back in 2001, when I was first elected, someday I would be the senior member of the board, I would have thought you'd be fibbing me. So it is kind of a unique position to be in. Before I turn it over to the town administrator to reorganize the board, let me just recognize, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, our former colleague, Dino de Batlemeus, who served for over thirty-three years as a member of the Board of Selectmen, did a wonderful job. His service is deeply appreciated, and I think the town is a better place because of Dino's work. Also, let me congratulate Mike Visconti on running for Board of Selectmen. It takes a lot to get out there and answer the questions and address the issues, and he deserves some thanks for that. And let me also welcome and congratulate our newest member of the board, Will Kincaid, who ran a very nice campaign on behalf of the town of Milford, and I know will be a great addition to the board, so we'll welcome him.
Thank you very much.
And at least I forget, the old timer next to me here, Bill Buckley, has done a great job in all of his years on the board, and he's approaching veteran status as well.
Ten years, you think that does it?
Time marches on. So with that, let me turn it over to the town administrator for reorganization.
Thank you, Brian. First, I would also like to welcome and congratulate Will Kincaid. I look forward to working with you, Will. At this point, I would request a motion to elect a new chairman for the Board of Selectmen and reorganize the board.
Mr. Chairman and Town Administrator, I'd like to gladly make a nomination for Brian Murray, in keeping with our tradition. Brian's rotation is certainly timely, given the changes on the board, and I'd like to acknowledge his years of service to the community and his leadership on this board by recommending and making a nomination for him as chairman.
And I gladly second that.
All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just for a moment, also acknowledge I wasn't here when Dino's last meeting, for Dino's last meeting, I'd like to acknowledge his many years of honorable services, community, knowing that he always had the best interest of Milford in mind. And I'd also like to welcome Mr. Kincaid to the board. He ran a great, great election, a great campaign, and a well-deserved win.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Bill, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll welcome.
Thank you again.
And as I indicated, you know, this is kind of a new experience for Bill and I. We haven't had a new member in a while. But please, don't hesitate to ask any question. Don't, if there's something, anything that you need, just let us know, we're here to help you.
Great. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Looking forward to working with you.
No, as am I.
Okay, so with that, let's get on with the business of the meeting. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have the meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, not having two of the members here present at the last meeting, just as a matter of necessity, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve those minutes of March 23rd.
And I'll be glad to second that motion. Would you be abstaining on that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's two in favor, one abstention, for the March 23rd.
But I did see it on cable television, so.
We believe you.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have minutes of last meeting.
That's right, yeah. Okay, so with that, the next item that we have is invitation to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Mr. Wheelock, why don't you come on down and address the board?
Hi there. I just wanted to speak up. I saw a little brief article in the Daily News about the Consigly and the TIF, or some version of a tax break for them, and I wanted to speak up as a citizen and urge the board to oppose the TIF or any other tax breaks for Consigly. Consigly's a fine company, and I think that you guys can stand up for the citizens of Milford and the citizens of the state of Massachusetts, and hope that they can conduct their business on the same level playing field that most ordinary taxpayers make their, you know, struggle to conduct their business by. The town has entered into TIFs with the old Saint Gobain and with the Ipsen Bio-Measure. I don't, besides not liking what you guys did with Saint Gobain, and I guess it all worked out fine, besides the taxpayers getting 200,000 less dollars over 20 years, but the Ipsen Bio-Measure one seems to be kaput. I think companies like Saint Gobain could have conducted that business and operation without the tax break. I think Consigly is really well-positioned to grow their company with just what they're doing. Great building, strong market, and a dynamite town. I don't think you guys need to worry about them moving out of town, but maybe they'll move out if you don't give them this. I imagine there's lots of citizens who think it's a bad idea to offer a tax break to Consigly. The other principle is, it goes beyond the tax break they get within the town of Milford. Apparently, it entitles them to some statewide tax breaks. So that's all. I hope to read a more detailed article in the Daily News about the fiscal implications to the tax base of Milford, with how this could continue on.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, Jamie, thank you very much for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we will move along to the scheduled hearings, and the first one that we have is from Fund Zone Milford LLC, DBA Pins. It is an application for two one-day automatic amusement licenses. And so I'm looking at it, looks like a one-day license for a mechanical bull on June 5th for the Douglas High School, Douglas after graduation, and I'm not sure what the second day is. The department sheet that we have indicates on the building commissioner that it's allowable use, the building and the restrooms are handicap accessible, the town planner indicates no change of actual use, the tax collector indicates there are no outstanding taxes, the town treasurer has no issue, nor does the fire chief or the police chief. And with that, we have David Breen, the owner of Pins, and David, maybe you can just clear it up, I don't know what the second one day is.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, congratulations, Will, welcome to the board. Now, you've got some big shoes to fill with Dino.
Certainly do.
With Dino. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. When I originally put in this application, I had been approached by two different schools. One was the town of Douglas for their after-graduation party, and forgive me on my dates, June 5th, I believe, is their date. The second one, I believe, was the week before for the Northbridge After Prom, May 29th. And since that time, Douglas was unable to acquire a mechanical bull. So I apologize. So Douglas has rescinded theirs, so this would be truly just a one-day license for Northbridge After Prom, May 29th.
Okay.
They have, so when they reached out to me, I told them I would go through the process of going in front of the board to acquire the one-day license. This is obviously, as in years past, as at least two of the members know, that we do this after prom. Milford has done it many years, and Northbridge in this situation, they wanted to bring in the bull. We went through the licensing. I did, and just for making sure everything is out in the open, when the company that I was dealing with, that Northbridge was dealing with, sent me over their license, it does show on their license from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that expired in February of 15. In an email that they had sent me, they said that we have already reapplied. The Department of Public Safety does take some time getting their license to us. It renews as of February 2015 through the '16 term, but they are backlog getting that information out to them. The license number doesn't change or anything. I did, in fact, actually call the Department of Public Safety to see how things were going, and right when you called, their voicemail does state the fact that they are backlog, and they're trying to get the licenses out, and it says, "Press 1 if you'd like to talk to somebody." Pressing 1, their voicemail was full, so I couldn't speak to anybody.
And this is the company that...
No, that was Department of Public Safety, just trying to...
No, I mean, but you're tracking the permit for the company that red-sold the mechanical bull?
I'm just trying to verify. Correct. I was just verifying the email that they had sent over to me. And it seems pretty up to snuff on that, that it's, you know, everything that they had told me in the email, Mr. Chairman, was truly, in fact, what's going on with Department of Public Safety. So that's really it. It's a private event, it's not open to the public, it's really going to come in, you know, probably during the day, but it won't activate until the after-prom event starts, which I've also sent over for an extension of my common victual.
Right. I forgot, I neglected to add that you're also looking for an extension on your common victual license for the three dates, correct?
That is correct.
The May 22nd, the May 29th, and the June 5th.
That is correct. Milford After Prom, Northbridge, and then the Douglas After Graduation.
And it's just going to be a one-day entertainment license for the mechanical bull for May 29th?
That is correct.
So those are the two motions that you would need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a quick question before I turn it over to the board. How does insurance work on this? Does your general liability insurance cover this, or do you need endorsement?
I made them. It wasn't really a question. I made them list me as an additional insured on this.
Okay.
So I already have that insurance certificate for the event that night.
And that's the insurance from the mechanical bull company?
From the party company that handles the mechanical bull that owns the mechanical bull.
Okay, all right. So you're a named insured on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
I wasn't doing it otherwise.
Okay, yeah, no, great.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just clarify, David, I just want to make sure it's not the Douglas one that you want, the mechanical bull, for on June 5th?
It is just the Northbridge.
Just the Northbridge, yes.
That's the May 29th.
Just the May 29th.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, Bill?
That was the question I had, so it's been clarified. I appreciate it.
I assume that you didn't need the mechanical bull here tonight, so we're...
We're not going to put the new member through that, all right? Come on now.
Hey, I did that 10 years ago, and it wasn't for that.
We only go so far. All right.
I was just assuming, so.
Yeah. Will?
No, I don't have any questions. I chaperoned it enough times, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we're going to need two motions, I believe?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on one-day mechanical bull for May 29th. Make that adjustment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And then the extension for the license for May 22nd, May 29th, and June 5th.
Motion made to extend the common victual license for the date stated. Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous.
Are you...
Good luck.
David, so do you get on the bull?
I do not.
Okay, all right.
I'm good to all for that.
Well, good luck with everything.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm going to adjust the agenda a little bit, because right now, we have scheduled the town accountant and the town treasurer position, but we do have representatives from Consigly Construction here, and I would like to go forward with that item. So Anthony, if you could come down to the front row, please. And what we have is correspondence from Consigly Construction, and they've had some preliminary meetings with representatives of the town, looking for tax increment finance agreement for a portion of real estate in Milford, I think adjacent to their existing location, where they're looking to expand their offices. So before I get into more, I'll turn it over to Anthony, and then if you could just introduce everybody for us.
Sure. So my name's Anthony Consigly. With me is Lynn Tesaric, who is our tax consultant, so to speak, and Scott Lerner is our CFO. So I guess before I start, I also want to congratulate you, Will, on your election. I want to thank the board for continued longtime leadership. It's with great pride that we go throughout New England, New York, and we say, hey, we're from Milford, Mass., and know the town is in such, the town's in such good standing. It's had such great leadership for a long time. Last, I want to thank Rick, just for expediting this process, working with us. It's been a really efficient, well-done process thus far. I know we're still at the very beginning, but it's much appreciated. So the, we're before you tonight, I think it was about 10 years ago that we were in front of you last time, when we relocated the Granite Building, which was a great success for us, and, you know, I believe we fulfilled the full agreement on that TIF. We're considering expanding down on Sumner Street. We've had the good fortune to have grown over the last several years, and with, just with the continued success that we've been able to have, we do need to add some staff, about 50 positions. We see these as typically higher-paying engineering, about 70% higher-paying engineering-type positions, about 30% administrative staff. We're looking at the 74 Sumner Street location right now, where the ambulance building is, so we would greatly be improving that property, and also addressing some parking constraints that we currently have.
A couple of things, just to enhance what Anthony's saying also. The company's grown, as you can imagine, over the past 10 years. Anthony, you might want to talk about some of the locations that you've expanded to.
Sure. So we have six offices now, throughout New England and New York. Portland, Maine, New York City, a small office in Washington, DC, Hartford, Connecticut, Poughkeepsie, New York. Milford has been supporting all those locations from a back-office kind of support functions, which has been great for the town. And so we've been able to, you know, in bringing people back for training or in supporting those positions, we were able to utilize a lot of town services, vendors, hotels, hotel rooms, conference space, you know, food. So it's worked out. I mean, Milford's been a great location, you know, to be able to do that. So in considering, okay, where do we expand, where do we expand jobs, it would be nice to be able to do it here. We've had a great partnership with Milford over the years. We always fight this tug-of-war between, okay, do you put the jobs actually where the work is happening, say, Boston, where a lot of our work is right now, and where a lot of younger people want to unfortunately be, you know, or to be able to do it here, where we've had a great deal of success over the years. So, you know, we're looking at roughly a 20,000-square-foot building, and I don't know, what else?
Right, 20,000-square-foot building, and the capital expenditure, as you may know, is in the estimated $5.5 million range, and that would consist of construction costs and some personal property as well for office. And then as far as jobs, and of course, well, with the investment, that's going to be generating all the tax revenue. As far as jobs, the company has 130 permanent full-time jobs.
Here in Milford?
Right, right here in Milford. There are 30 approximately in Boston. As Anthony mentioned, the company's grown, and they had to have a location in Boston. You know, that's where a lot of the engineers want to be, and a lot of the talent is coming right out of the city. Everything that's been happening in the Innovation District. And company-wide, the company has approximately 900 jobs now, so that's really grown over the past several years. And it's, and the jobs to be created are 50, 50 new permanent full-time jobs. And Anthony, you might want to talk about that a lot of those jobs, of the 130, live right here in Milford.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we've had very good success hiring in the local area in Milford, more so than anywhere. So it's, I mean, it's a great community for that. A lot of our engineering grads will come out of, say, West Politech, or some, or Wentworth, some of the local engineering schools, you know, and just being local here, will relocate to the area, you know, or they'll do the reverse commute from Boston.
Right. And a lot of the, these jobs, you know, engineering and the like, these are all, you know, higher-educated, higher-skilled, high-wage jobs. So it's nice, and, you know, where the company provides that diversity, it's really a little bit, you know, something for everyone. A few accolades also about, you know, the workforce being, you know, recognized in the papers.
Sure. You know, I think we've, last six or seven years, been recognized by the Boston Globe as the best places to work, so it's, you know, we've had a very good partnership with our employee base, also from a corporate citizenship standpoint. West Business Journal recognizes us as the corporate citizen partner of the year. So we do try to give back in the local community, whether that be Milford or the surrounding areas.
Right. And as far as giving back also, you know, talk about the local economic impact that Consigly has had right here in the town of Milford. The company and its employees are both spending locally. The employees are spending at the restaurants, at, you know, the pizza place, the delis, you know, all of, a lot of the services, dry cleaning, automotive services, but as well as the company, because they own their corporate headquarters, they can make decisions to hire locally, you know, whether it's, you know, various contractors, you know, electricians, plumbers, printing companies, office supplies, you know, they are, they can make their own, create their own destiny in that, as well as hotels. You know, Milford has grown, I live in Bellingham, so I patronize and do a lot of, you know, shopping and spending here, and I've seen all the hotels constructed over the years, and it's great to see. But Consigly, because it's their corporate headquarters, they have a lot of trainings and a lot, you know, they're coming in, the entourages are coming in, not just one, not two, but several for training, so they're staying, and they're, you know, spending money right here in Milford. So that's great. So as well as, you know, again, the company and its employees. And then something that's quite noteworthy about Consigly is their community involvement.
Well, I mean, obviously locally here, but I think we give to about 50 different charities, several hundred thousand dollars a year. We want a local golf event that raises probably 50, $60,000 per year, so, you know, so it's been a, as I said, it's been a good partnership with the community and several different organizations.
Right. And speaking, you know, about the incentives, the company and the town, with Rick and Jerry Moody, Zach Taylor, and of course Larry Duncan, we met the other day, and I can't, you know, we work on TIFs all over the state, and this was a very, very, you know, fast-track, so it's very appreciated. However, it was, with all due respect, the TIF that Consigly had proposed was negotiated down by the team, so fortunately, the company and the TIF team were able to come to a mutual arrangement. But Anthony's going to, you know, share with you why they need incentives.
Well, number one, it's an expensive building, so we have to invest a lot of technology in the building, because it's all used by engineers, so whether it be audiovisual or, you know, technology systems, in order for engineers to be able to do their work. So it's an expensive building, number one. Number two is because we really do want to address the parking, parking situation that we have at the office building, that we're going to have to add, you know, some money for infrastructure. Third, the town of Milford, as much as I love the town, it does have a high corporate tax rate, you know, probably double of a lot of what the communities, other communities that we see. And we wouldn't, you know, we understand that, we get that, you know, we're not looking to change anything that we're paying for our existing tax base, it's just this new building going forward. We're looking to see if we can make it as commercially tenable as possible by looking at some of the same incentives that are out there that a lot of the clients that we're building for are using, and frankly, that we've seen in comparison in and around the area.
Right. So the company...
And we also want to build a quality building as well. It's, a lot of our competitors, frankly, are either in leased space or metal buildings, you know, it's a fiercely competitive industry from the standpoint of being able to survive on the margins that are there and the risk that's present. You know, we would really like to put up a quality building that's going to be a 50-year building and one we can be proud of.
Right. So basically, this TIF is very important, as Anthony was indicating, in order to move forward with this project. This particular option is under consideration right now. So, you know, we thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, before I turn it over to the board, let me just address a couple of points. First of all, you know, I think it's absolutely wonderful that we have a business like Consigly Construction housed in Milford.
Oh, thank you.
You know, this is the kind of corporate citizen that the town wants to encourage and wants to see thrive. And I didn't even realize, I know you've gotten big, but I didn't realize it until I saw the Boston Globe last week, where it announced that Jerry Leone, the former Middlesex DA, is going to be joining your staff pretty soon. But, you know, the thing that, you know, caught my eye on this story, quite frankly, is it marked you down as an 800-person company, the state's second-largest general contractor after Suffolk Construction. And to me, you know, to have that kind of a business in the town of Milford is very, very impressive.
Thank you.
And, yeah, you know, and I didn't know that. I didn't, I knew you were growing...
We don't do a great job marketing all the time, so.
Well, I mean, I didn't know that you were at that kind of size, you know. I knew that you were involved, but, you know, to me, that's quite an accomplishment. The other thing is, and I know that there was a TIF for your company before that, but people need to realize what the actuality of that TIF was. And I suppose there was a degree of economic benefit to you, but I don't think that it really measured out to the kind of benefit that came to the town of Milford. And I pulled this out of my file, do you remember this? You know, this was, you know, quite, quite an issue. It was the Granite Building, which is now your main headquarters, which, by the way, it's an absolutely gorgeous building on Sumner Street. I'm still amazed, every time I go by it, that it was moved block by block. I think, I remember when you were here, going through this, I think I asked you, are you going to be able to move this? And you said, well, it's not me, but I got a lot of guys working for me that really know what they're doing. And it still amazes me. So, you know, I don't know what the economics of that was, but in terms of the benefits of the town of Milford, it was tremendous. As part of that, you also took down the old senior center, which was the elementary building. You ran into a great deal of hazardous material. I think there was a buried oil tank. I mean, it was just one problem after another, and it was all encompassed as part of that project, and left the town with a very clean, neat site that we've been able to utilize for school for at least the past 10 years, and now that site's going to move on as well. So, you know, that's just one aspect of what your company's done for the town. I know you've been very, very supportive of the youth center, I know high school programs, a lot of youth organizations, you're probably the first company they turn to, and you don't often say no. So to me, you've been a tremendous, you know, corporate citizen in the town of Milford. Now, I think that we would be operating with blinders on and really ignoring the global marketplace that's going on right now, if we were to say, well, Consigly, that's an old Milford name, they're not going anywhere. It doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. And you've outlined, you know, one of the town's weak spots from a commercial point of view, the dual tax rate. It is what it is, but it does put us on an unlevel playing field with other communities. So we have to try to do more to court good business and keep good business that we have. So those are just really some of the preliminary remarks that I wanted to say before we get into the TIF, and kind of make an explanation of what this TIF is. It really isn't a tax break, because there's no tax right now.
Correct.
You know, it's not a tax break, you know? I mean, if you, if this gets rejected and you move somewhere else, there is nothing to be achieved.
That's right. We continue to pay our taxes for the built infrastructure that we have.
Right, right.
But there are no new tax revenues generated.
Right, from the new $5.5 million building.
Correct.
You know, so it's a long-term investment in the town. But let me turn it over to the board, and then we can flesh it out a little bit more. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, at the risk of being redundant, certainly, I've been involved in a lot of various TIF discussions, or several, and some have gone well and some have not, in the sense that some, we realize the building, and some where we couldn't come to an agreement. You know, I think it was... You know, I think it was ten or so years ago, you and I sat down at the school committee meeting, talking about that exact building, and, you know, I, I do remember that vividly. And for a lot of the reasons that Brian talked about, we're certainly fortunate to have your company in Milford.
Thank you.
There's, there's no doubt, longstanding history with your family, your family has been a pillar of this community for many, many years, and it's, it's exciting frankly to see the, the growth and expansion of your building, and I would say, you know, a lot of credit goes to you. You know, I know that you've worked hard, spent a lot of hours, I'm sure.
A lot of good people there.
And, and I know some of those people, as, as you said, some of those are Milfordians. So you can also realize that some of the challenges that the board has in, in, and the feedback it receives sometimes, because there are great many businesses in the community that are, are shining examples of how we want corporations to behave, how we hope that they behave, and how they, you know, are struggling in economic times to, to make do. So some of the feedback, quite frankly, is from the smaller business owners that say, "Hey, what about a TIF for me?"
Sure.
The TIF, the TIF discussion, so I, I'm not at all, I don't wanna make it sound this way, that I'm at all opposed to the concept of TIF, and as I said, I've, I've signed a few TIFs, but let me tell you where I am on this. I think I wanna, I, I just wanna understand it a little bit, because it's taken a path that I've never seen before, and it, as a member of the board for ten years, I'm a little bit troubled by that, and it's not a result of anything that you had to do. You, you approached the town looking for a TIF agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you set forth parameters by which you are gonna expand and grow, and those are pretty clear. We don't have a TIF team. We don't have a fast-track process, and we don't have an expedite process. Now, I'm trying to use some of the words that presented earlier in explaining the process. The process would typically come to the board members, the board members would set forth parameters that they were comfortable with, and then there'd be some back and forth going to council. With that said, I've not seen this proposal until now. And while there's some things that I understand, I haven't had the opportunity to be taken through the process of the back and forth that would've happened as a natural byproduct of what I'm typically involved in. So, with that, I, I, you know, I, I actually wanna backtrack with the town administrator a little bit and the town, town council, because there are opportunities to call meetings, if we need to call a meeting, if we needed to call a meeting last week, we could've called the meeting last week, if we needed to call something earlier, we could've done that. There's never been a TIF agreement that I'm aware of that hasn't gone through the board's selectment, so now I'm in an awkward position. I'm in a position to accept or reject a discussion and the results of a discussion, but quite frankly, I've not, not been a part of. And I'm troubled by that, because as a senior elected official within the community, one of three, there are other people within the community that certainly have authority and responsibility, but they're not elected, and so therefore, I don't wanna pretend that any of them have the responsibility to negotiate that. Typically, it's set forth by the board to negotiate on behalf of the board, and then of course, you understand the process of ratification through town meeting.
Correct.
What I would need to know and I need to understand before we go forward, is this a take-it-or-leave-it proposal that sits on, in front of me right now? I would hope that it's not, because there may so, there may be just a little bit of being pulled through this knothole, that I need to understand some of the back and forth and get some more of the background, because there's things I might've recommended, and I would like, as an elected official of the community, to make, be able to make those recommendations. Now, if they're rejected by your company, I absolutely understand that, because, you know, this, this is business. I would like to have had benefit of prior discussion that would've occurred throughout the, the past week or so, understanding exactly what options you were investigating, because you heard a member of the community here, but I had the same question frankly, what are the options you're looking at? Are you looking at communities with lower tax rates? Are you looking at Boston and growing that? Are, are we in competition, and where are we in competition with?
So the easiest thing for us to do, so the, the answer to your questions, one is no, it's not a take-it-or-leave-it, that's not how we operate.
Okay.
Okay. You know, two is, is that what, what is a constraint for us is time. Construction's a highly cyclical business, it goes up and down based on how the economy is and, and, you know, our own competitiveness, competitiveness at the time. So we need to find space for people now, so we need to act quickly, which is maybe one of the reasons why we're asking the town to move on this quickly. The, the, frankly, the, the jobs that we're adding are, are, you know, positions that need to be added quickly, but are also, you know, positions where the easiest thing for us to do would just be to lease space at, at our existing facility in Boston, whereas where a lot of kids wanna be, a lot of younger kids coming out of school.
Sure.
They wanna go out to eat, they wanna go to the bars at night, they wanna, you know, the, the bright lights of, of the city. So, you know, we've been, we have a little bit of a back and forth, saying, okay, do we just lease additional space in the building that we're in, in, on Sumner Street in Boston, or do we build permanent structure in, in Milford and improve the property that we currently own? So the idea was, you know, we have a, you know, land in Milford where we can improve the space around us and make our corporate facility, you know, better, but that's a much, much, much bigger investment than just leasing short-term space and then taking the slow road and saying, "Okay, are these permanent jobs that are gonna stay no matter whether the economy goes up or down?" So, you know, we made the decision to, to approach Rick and his team to say, "Look, would the town be willing to invest with us in, you know, improving the space down on, on Sumner Street and putting the jobs here now versus a short-term solution of, of leasing space?"
And you understand the, the nature of my point, right? That what I was trying to communicate is that if the town is interested, typically, that would come from this board, and it's taken a track that frankly is a little troubling to me, but not of your responsibility or your making. You know, again, we have elected people, and we have appointed people, and elected people have the authority to, to engage with town council, establish some parameters, and then work with you. It's not taken, taken that tack. It's the first time I've seen it since I've been on the board, and I, I needed to know a little bit more, I'll still need to know a little bit more. And, you know, with that, well, you know what, I'd like to defer my, any additional comments, just while the, the board members have an opportunity to ask questions, gain an understanding, because I'm of the opinion that maybe we ought to schedule a meeting as fast as possible, meet with town council, meet with the town administrator, and, and discuss some of the parameters that have already been worked through, so we can understand the history.
Okay. Well, we have town council here, did you wanna ask them any questions now?
Nope, not right now, at this moment.
Okay. Well?
Yeah, Anthony, you'll have to, excuse me, when I, when I saw this, I thought, quite honestly, this has been going on for some time, and Brian and Bill were gonna, you know, kinda educate me on this, so I feel like I'm in an awkward position as well now, just kinda hearing this, but, so I certainly wouldn't have a problem, you know, taking Bill's suggestion and getting everyone together. Not so much for you guys, I mean, even if you turned on the radio, this is the type of stuff I believe in. This is, you know, this, things that I was talking about is, is close as a week or two ago, on the radio, saying, "This is what we have to do to keep businesses here in Milford, especially strong businesses, especially hundred-year-old businesses." I work at the MBTA, I see your guys even in there all the time, you're everywhere. It's a, it's a good thing, but quite honestly, I think that maybe however quick, you know, the chairman and, and Bill can, you know, get together with a, with a meeting and meet our internal folks, and at this point, for them to sell us on it. I know you're on a tight time schedule, I don't know what can be done to, to do that, just so we're all comfortable with this. I guess that's my two cents at this point, 'cause to be honest with you, I didn't think I was gonna be speaking at all, other than, you know, hearing what's been going on for the last few months or so, and I don't think that's obviously been the case.
Okay.
So, I'm generally very supportive of things like this, so I leave you with that, but I think maybe the three of us need to be sold, or I guess I need to be sold on, on this, 'cause I do think I wanna be able to get up on town meeting floor and defend this. And I don't think I'm in a position right now to do that, other than, well, they've been working on this for months, and I wasn't around, so I'm not responsible. I think I am actually going to have a say in this, which I wasn't expecting, other than a formality, so I would like to be part of that process. So internally, if, you know, if our folks can sell, sell me on it, then I can get up and defend it at town meeting if necessary.
Understood.
Okay, let's, hold on, let's talk about a couple of things for a second, so, you know, we can get a more general understanding of exactly where we're at with this. One of the things that I did when I saw this paperwork here was, I, I looked at my spreadsheet on all of the Milford TIF agreements that we've given over the years, because I wanted to see how these numbers matched up in terms of the deals that we've done. And it's quite similar, you know, probably, quite similar, maybe a, a little less favorable to the business than the St. Gobain one that we did recently. The Holmes one that was done early on, the Taylor that was done early on, it's much less favorable to the business than, than those, than those TIF agreements are. There were some other TIF agreements, for example, Lowe's, which, I didn't count that as a TIF. I mean, it was for them to try to key into state benefits, it was one percent for ten years, so that was really sort of a perfunctory-type agreement. But, you know, as I compared this spreadsheet to, to what is here on this spreadsheet, I think the numbers are quite favorable to the town, in terms of what we've done in the past. So, let's talk about this just for a little bit, so, so we know exactly what we're talking about, and the spreadsheet that you provided us, okay, it goes from years one to fifteen. Now, it, it, it keeps the numbers static in terms of the current property tax base, and I think you could assume an increase, but, but that's okay, if all the numbers are static, that, that's fine, it gives us a baseline. So if nothing were to be done, and Consigly Construction did not expand, and there was no TIF, in the span of fifteen years, the town would realize about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxes from that piece of property, okay? If the TIF was granted as requested, and Consigly went forward with the, the addition, the incremental tax payment to the town would be about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That's the additional funds that the towns would get, so if you add that with the one fifty, during the life of the TIF, the town would receive over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in tax revenue. And again, I think those numbers would be larger, because I think it's reasonable to assume that you're gonna have percentage increases over that fifteen-year period. Now, the company, during that time period, does save about six hundred and ninety thousand dollars if it were taxed dollar for dollar at the, at the full corporate rate. But, again, it's, it's, it's almost misleading to qual- to, to quantify that as a, as a, as a tax break, because if the investment does not incur, if the investment does not occur, the town doesn't get three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's kind of where, where it's at, so, you know, I, I've always viewed these things, first of all, as an examination of the business, okay? Whether or not this is the kind of business that we wanna encourage in the town of Milford, and if you look at the companies that we've dealt with, Waters, Avisha, Biomeasure, St. Gobain, I mean, these are all businesses that I think we covet and value, and, you know, wanna do something to try to encourage growth in. Obviously, I, I, I see your business in the same light, and quite frankly, if we were scorekeeping, I would probably give your business higher points, because there's been much greater community involvement. At some point during the years, and the state shut it down, but starting with the Lowe's agreement, one of the things that I requested was an independent grant program, so that the real estate tax savings would come back to the town by way of payments. They made two payments, fifteen thousand dollars each, which were used for Fino Field. The Biomeasure one was ten thousand dollar payments for, for ten years. We, we did also one with Clementi Realty, and then the state shut it down, they said that they figured out what we were doing, and we, we, we can't do it anymore. But I thought it was a good idea, and, and, and it, and it worked out well till, till the state kinda figured it out. So that doesn't happen anymore, and, you know, to be honest with you, I don't even see that as part of this discussion, because you're involved in the community anyway. And, you know, from, from nature of the business, to then community involvement, those are kinda two of the big factors that I always looked at when, when I was dealing with these things. So, you know, as I, as I see the numbers, I, I see them as quite fair, I see them in line with the businesses that we've, who, quite frankly, haven't had the level of community involvement that your businesses have. So I, I'm not troubled about what was negotiated. However, in, in deference to, to my colleagues, I, I, I think I would be more than willing to schedule a special meeting. All we need is two-day notice, and, you know, we can, we, we can evaluate it at that point. The goal is however, to have this as part of the town meeting for May eighteenth. So let me ask the town administrator and/or town council, wh- wh- what is our advertising requirement for the special town meeting? What's our, do you know what our drop-dead date is?
Yeah, we have...
To get it on for May eighteenth?
We will have sufficient time.
I know, what, what's the time period? Do we need two weeks, or?
Fourteen days, I believe, Jerry?
We have posted fourteen days.
Fourteen days, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so, so we could go up to May fourth or so, before we post for the special town meeting, is that fair to say, or is that too tight?
You could, yeah, I mean, I, what you probably do, if everything, if everything reaches an agreement, you'll do a special within the annual.
Right, yeah.
One article special.
Right.
So ideally, if you had it done in time, so that the mailing and everything else could be brought at the same time with the information to, to the town meeting members for the annual town meeting, that would be the best situation.
Okay.
So that would, you know, May fourth, it'd be better to get a little bit in front, in front of that, but I don't know what the town clerk's deadline is.
Okay, all right, so, so by, by May first. Okay, May first, to get it on for the special town meeting, because you have a degree of urgency in terms of dealing with the state, and also some other requirements that you have. And I certainly understand, I mean, just in the projects, I've been aware, it seems as though the cycle's moving up, and, you know, construction prices are growing.
It is rapidly.
Yes.
And we appreciate, and, look, we want everybody to be very comfortable with this, so we, we, we get that, but we also very much appreciate you making special considerations in terms of setting up meetings and, and all that, so that's very much appreciated.
Okay, so with that, let me turn it over to the town administrator, when do you wanna schedule a meeting?
Do it as early as Thursday, if, if the board was so inclined.
Thursday?
It's one history lesson, yeah. We'd be looking at, well, Friday or Tuesday, I mean, because Monday's the holiday.
Do you have any idea, Bill?
Thursday after work, that would work very well for me.
We could go earlier if, if the board was also so inclined, instead of going at seven, but obviously, the Thursday would, would...
What, what time works for you? What time do you get into town on Thursday?
I could be here as early as five-thirty or so.
You want to do it at six?
Six would be fine.
Be safe, just in case traffic...
Yeah. We don't want these situations on the highways. Yeah, sure.
Excuse me, would you be looking for the, the Consigly team to attend?
Well, that's my next question.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, so who, who are you looking to have at that meeting?
Well, the request, the request that I would have, and frankly, now that I hear the days, I think there was plenty of time for, to involve the board. You know, we have businesses working with us in good faith, you know, I think there was ample opportunity, but that said, you know, what I'd like to do is meet with the people, representatives from Milford who have already met with the Consigly team, I wanna hear and go through the process of the back and forth, I wanna input some suggestions to see what extent, what extent those suggestions have already been explored, if they have, I, you know, I'll, you know, apologize in advance, but at the same time, have you recognized that we may revisit some pieces that you thought we had already gone through? But that, that being said, the duly-elected people that have the opportunity to decide whether this goes forward or not, should have the opportunity to, to weigh in. And, and I appreciate your flexibility. Is there, you know, we've checked with town council, and we've checked with the town administrator, about any potential critical dates and time sensitivity, is there anything that we're missing on your behalf, that we, you know, if we miss some date, then it...
No.
Are we in the same...
No, we, we seem to be in line with all of the upcoming deadlines, so the, the town meeting is really the, the date that we're focused on.
Right, so, so I'm kinda using that, and I wanna go to May first as opposed to May fourth, I'm kinda using that as a drop-dead date and working backwards.
It works for me.
And so, just so I would understand, so potentially on Thursday? And so, just so I would understand, so potentially on Thursday, you would meet internally with your team? And then it would need to come back to the Board of Selectmen, whatever the-
No, no, this is going to be a meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, but then it would need to go back to the Board of Selectmen for the board to vote to recommend-
We could do it that night.
You could do-
Or we could schedule another special meeting.
Okay.
The only question I have is, do you want representatives of consigly there?
No, I don't think it'll be necessary that evening. I, I think what we need to do, I, I think what you can sense here is a little tension as it relates to our internal process and how we go about negotiating with businesses for TIFs. One of the things I'd like to make sure that's clear, uh, more clearly communicated is reinforcing what I, what I expect as, as part of that process, and I don't think that's something that you'd want to be a part of or would need to be a part of.
Right, so, again, to make sure I understand, so potentially, if you came up with, you know, what, you know, we hope that you look at this favorably, and potentially you could vote on it on Thursday night, but you may not-
Correct.
Vote, you may need to bring something to our attention after that.
If, if, if we need something else, we'll, we'll have another meeting in two days. Alright?
Okay.
So we need forty-eight hour notice?
Yeah, that's it.
And I can assure you as chairman that this is going to be fast-tracked.
Okay.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So this is going to happen, one way or the other. Um, you know, if we have to meet Saturday morning or whatever we do, I want everybody to feel comfortable that the level of information is there, but we're going to take action. No night, or afternoon, or morning is off limits in terms of a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Just do it.
Thank you.
Brian, can I just add that, uh, yeah, and one, again, being the new guy, I'm going to be looking for, internally, even with the chart that Brian showed, the history of, obviously, ten years ago, I was on the school committee, when you guys did help us out as much as you ended up with a beautiful office building.
You have another, you have another one, we'll-
You did a great job with that one.
I was directly, I was directly involved with that, and I, and I, I didn't need a history lesson. Now, just coming on in my first meeting and hearing some internal stuff, I just want to, uh, I'm looking for a history lesson on Thursday, and then we'll go forward from there.
Just one quick item. I know that you were reviewing the, um, the, the Milford TIFs that have been approved in the past, but what we also discussed and submitted, uh, with a breakdown of spreadsheet, was some of the recent TIFs in some of the communities.
Okay.
So we do have that available, because that's something that the company was, was very focused on as well.
I think that might be great for everyone, but I'm operating under the assumption that we're in a competition. Okay? I, you know-
But that information is helpful to me.
That information is helpful, but we're in a competition. You don't need to convince me of that. I know that there's other options on the table. Uh, I know, you know, Milford's a great place, but the, you know, from a commercial point of view, you know, we have our, you know, soft underbelly also, so, you, you know, we really need to do, put our best foot forward. We've done it in the past. So, you know, anything that you think would, would be helpful, you know, just pass on to the town administrator. And, uh, you know, in terms of the process, just so, you know, everyone's o- okay with things, I mean, there's no question that this happened quickly. Um, you've got certain schedules to, to work on. Um, I, I think our, our personnel worked on it very quickly to do the best they could to get us a level of information. And then, of course, it was kind of a transition time, which is a little different for all of us, so, um, you know, I think it's just a conflux of circumstances. But, uh, we're in place now, and I'm the chairman, and, uh, this is going to be top priority in terms of scheduling.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next item that we have is the town accountant to discuss the town treasurer position.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Zach, how are you?
Very well, how about yourself?
Good, good, good.
Like I say, congratulations to Will as well. Look forward to working with you.
You too, pal.
So, uh, it's pretty straightforward. About a month ago, a little longer, came forward to, um, lay out a plan of the municipal finance department, some of the changes that we're looking to do at town meeting. Make the finance director, uh, enhance benefits coordination. And, uh, with that said, it, it had an impact on our existing, uh, job description for the treasurer. So what, uh, Rick and I had, had done was take a look at it and extract any of the duties that would be shifted over, and just revised it for what this new plan is going to be. And, uh, I think you're all provided with a copy. It's pretty straightforward, and we want to get that posted and, uh, start interviewing candidates and get us fully staffed and operational. We're, we're really feeling it right now with, uh, being short-staffed, and Kelly and the treasurer team is doing a really good job, but we're starting to fail it, and we want to start, uh, putting some new reconciliation processes in and stuff like that, so. Really want to get approval tonight, move forward, and, uh, very confident we can get the right person this time. And, um, we'll go through the whole process and hopefully be in front of you. And, uh, I think Rick wanted to go through some of the important dates there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do that?
Yeah, sure. We put timeline in front of you. Uh, we're recommending that we, obviously, will advertise because of the nature of the position in the beacon. We can meet the May first publication date. We'll also advertise in the Daily News, the Town Crier, the website, the MMA website, as well as the Town of Milford website. Uh, we would look to close the application process being submitted by Friday, June fifth. Then, the following weeks, uh, it, town administrator, myself, and finance director Zach would go through the applications, conduct some preliminary interviews if needed. Uh, we would then submit names to the board of at least three qualified applicants, or more if the board would consider. Obviously, we would make all applications available to each board member for their purview also, uh, and recommendation. Uh, we would look to try to, uh, complete the process by July sixth to, uh, appoint, uh, the, uh, successful candidate, which would involve, obviously, selectmen, our interview of, uh, of candidates also. Um, it's a, a timeline we think we can meet. And, uh, obviously, if the board has any, uh, input and they would like to tweak it, we would obviously consider that, but, uh, that would be the timeline that we'd be looking at.
Okay, questions, Bill? Comments?
Um, I've had an opportunity to look this over. Uh, I'm fairly happy with the, uh, the, the plan as it moves forward. The, the only comment I had, actually, I have two. Um, item four on the recommendations for timeline mentions eligible candidates for interview, three qualified, uh, uh, candidates, or the board's recommendation of one individual. Um, you know, I went back and forth whether I wanted to see five, or one, or three, and it's, uh, my preference, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, this board receive, uh, three qualified applicants. And if we're not, uh, if we're not able to get that, uh, then maybe we consider reposting, because, uh, I, I'd like to see three. And so, I think your recommendation says at least three.
Yes.
If I read it correctly, um, and you gave us another option, I'd like to choose the option that says three, three qualified candidates. July fourth, um, I'm sorry, the, the July sixth date, we're coming off, uh, you know, what would be a long weekend. Just, I'll tell you to be mindful of that, but there's nothing that forces us to do something too fast.
Correct.
We'll do what's right, and we'll interview the people that, uh, should be interviewed, but-
Yeah.
My, my only comment is recommendation, we follow their first recommendation as three qualified candidates. But other than that, I think, uh, you've laid it out. I think, uh, you, you give us, given us a strategy to look forward to, to see, uh, talking about how the, how the department's going to be organized. This has been long in the making, in part, even the, uh, uh, external auditor's, uh, recommendation that we tighten up our organizational structure.
Correct.
So this is consistent with it, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, well, sure.
Thank you. Zach, under the supervisory responsibilities, I know the model is obviously changing based on, uh, you know, a small glimpse of it. We got it when I was on the finance committee. Um, it says the employee is responsible for the supervision of three employees at the current staffing levels. Who, I don't need to know names, but I mean, who, are those, the three, like, support staff folks in the office now? Because I know, obviously, the model calls for Kelly coming out.
Yeah, yeah, um, yep, there, there wouldn't be any oversight over Kelly. She'll kind of have her own crew at that point.
Okay, I thought that's what you told me.
Benefits coordination, yeah. But they'll still have an assistant, which is an Article II employee, assistant town treasurer. And, uh, there, there would also be a Mace employee as well.
And that's secretary or clerical?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, clerical, yep.
Alright, great.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bill?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, and you're okay, and you're okay getting the three applicants?
Yeah, that'd be great. I was, yeah.
Yeah, and actually, to, to, to Bill's point, I mean, we, we want to get this done right. Obviously, there was a little hard feeling the last round, so if we, if we have to post this a second time, I will not hesitate to do so.
Yeah, let's do it right.
Yeah.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so I think we're all on the same page in terms of, uh, the timeframe is, is, is a guideline. It would be looking, I guess, to get three applicants. Um, we can schedule interviews during that week, and then, um, July sixth kind of gives us a ballpark idea as to when we might want to make the final appointment.
Correct, yep. That's right at my year, our year-end too, so it'll be, uh, pretty crazy as well, so if we have to push back to, to the next meeting, that's certainly doable.
Yeah, okay, great. Good, well, thanks a lot. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Um, we're just going to go through Rick's report, but then go over town meeting articles. Can you just stick around for a bit?
Got it.
Okay, alright. Uh, that concludes the public hearings. Uh, town administrator's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm happy to report that we have moved up the installation of the sound system for upper town hall. Uh, in fact, the process began today. Uh, the required equipment, uh, came in earlier than expected, so the installer, Ad Tech Systems, was able to move up the project two weeks. We still estimate it'll take three to five days to install. Um, the IT technician, technician, excuse me, maintenance supervisor and building inspector are all being involved in the process and monitoring the installation. Um, I am also informed by town engineer, Vani Reese, that the project to resurface and provide intersection improvements on Route sixteen, from Water Street to the Hope deal town line, was placed on the priority list, uh, first tier tip list. Uh, the first tier list consists of the highest ranking projects that could be ready to be advertised for construction within the next, uh, four federal fiscal years. Mass DOT has approved, uh, $5.4 million for the project. Uh, I have been informed by fire chief, Tui, that he has purchased a 2015 Polaris Ranger vehicle through an emergency management performance grant. While it is an emergency management department property, it's going to be stored and maintained at the fire department. This is the type of vehicle that will enable the department to access areas that were prior only accessible by foot. The Milford Pond Project is, uh, moving forward. Palmer Charter has started the work on the pond, and has finished setting up the pipe and perimeter of the wetland reclamation area. They plan to launch the dredge the week of April twentieth. Um, I want to report on one of the articles that's on the, uh, town meeting warrant, the Louisa Lake Dam. Uh, due to access restriction and a late spring, our consultant, GZA, has not been able to begin field work on the project. Therefore, we will need to recommend to pass over, this would be Article thirty-five at the annual town meeting, as we need to report, uh, to, we need to report to evaluate the repairs and to know what the cost of those repairs will be. Uh, town engineer is fairly certain we will be able to request and secure an extension from the Office of Dam, Dam Safety. And finally, uh, I want to thank senior custodian, Carlos Benjamin, highway surveyor Scott Christopher, and members of the highway department. Uh, if you noticed today, they started putting up the spring banners and, uh, flags along, uh, Main Street, and as always, their efforts are most appreciated. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions, Bill?
Uh, no, no questions. You actually answered the question I had related to town meeting article, Article thirty-five.
Yeah, that's going to be needed to-
It would, it would have been hard for us to move forward recommending favorable without an understanding of the dollar value.
Sure, sure. Uh, Will, call it?
No, no, thank you, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, moving on, old business, uh, we have town meeting articles for review. Um, a couple, you know, jump out at me, which I'd like to find out what the board would like to do on. Number one is going to be the, um, Article Two from the Personnel Board, their new salary and wage class. I'd like to get feedback from the board members as to whether or not you'd like to have someone from the Personnel Board to come in.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, a, a great idea, great suggestion.
Okay.
We could schedule them for the next meeting if, if you'd so inclined.
Yeah.
I have reached out to them already, and they-
Okay. It's a new classification system, it's a new Article Two. Uh, we really haven't had anything on it, uh, so if you wanted to come in, let's do that. Okay, so we can schedule that next meeting then, Rick?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, alright, so that one's, that one's off the list. And the other one that I think, I, I guess, is the, um, uh, most problematic is going to be the Godfrey Brook repairs. And, um, we do have some memos, I think a couple of memos from the town engineer, if you want to turn to that now. And Zach, you've been looking into this a little bit. Um, I, I guess, you know, the question is whether or not we try to go forward with the complete project, even though it, it came in a bit higher than we had expected, or another alternative might be to split the project in two, do it over time, probably costs a little bit more, but it, it's easier to, uh, to, to handle it any one single time. So, um, any feedback that you can give us on that would be great.
Okay, yeah, fine, that sounds good. Um, yeah, the bids came in a little bit higher than we expected. We're hoping a little over two million. Um, with, the low bid came in at 2.3, and, uh, there was actually quite a bit of bids as well, I think there was 10.
There were about 10 bids. The low bid was around 2.3, but unfortunately, according to Vani, we would need to add in a 10% uh, contingency, so you'd be looking at 2.6.
Yeah.
And we do have a grant of roughly $800,000, I believe, so we'd be looking at 1.8.
Yeah, so, so the overall cost that we would have to appropriate at town meeting at the annual, if we move forward, would be 2.6 million, um, even though there is 800,000 from FEMA, um, ma- grant matching, more or less, that we would be eligible for, but-
And that's a reimbursable grant, so we have to spend the money, and then we get the money later?
Correct, therefore, you have to appropriate the full amount upfront.
Yeah.
So hence the, the 2.6, but we know that that 800 would, would be coming in later on. So, um, in order to do so, to have a full appropriation, we would have to bond a portion of it, or at least give authorization to bond. So, we, right now, we have 1.4 million in free cash, and, uh, preliminary plans right now would say that minimally we could throw $1 million at it, and then we'd have to bond 1.6. So, this, if we move forward with this option, this, this work would be done over the summer, and by the time we got to the October town meeting, the special, we would actually see what situation we are. I'll have new certified free cash at that point. We would also have received our $800,000 from FEMA, which would leave 800 on the table. And at that point, we make a decision to see what financial position we're in. I'll know exactly what our revenue streams are. We'll have our operating budget already tied down. Um, we'll have whatever additional capital needs out there, as well as, we'll also be looking to, uh, hopefully try to rescind whatever remaining, the 900,000 remaining at the youth center as well. So, um, I know it's a scary term, saying we're going to bond when, when we have the school that hasn't even hit yet, but it, it's more or less really to try to just secure the bids right now.
The junior venture.
Yeah, and, and that very much our, our goal and objective would be to eliminate whatever bonding there would be once we get to October. But at this point, I mean, we, we can't say that with any degree of certainty, as, uh, we, we do also have the same plan for the Milford Youth Center as well, which is 900. So, I mean, and we're hoping that when we get in that position, we probably will have a pretty good free cash year this year. And if we could take out both of them, that, that would definitely be what the plan should be if we move forward with, with this option. Now, option two would be that we could split it. If we split it, the 800,000 from FEMA also gets split, so it's not straight up 400, 400, but close enough for, for, um, argument's sake, we'll call it 400,000. One of the issues with that is we would have to rebid the project. So, we kind of showed our hand right now with what other bids came in, and, um, I would imagine we would have some repeat bidders that, that just put in at this time. So, it's certainly the possibility that it could come in significantly higher, based on that one theory. And the second, the fact that just the economy of scale, now you have, you, you had two projects, you already got the equipment costs there, the location, and, and all of that. So, if, if it's going to be split, that could also have an impact as well, where just, just pure economy of scale, that-
Maybe lower.
It, it could be, it potentially could be as well.
Yeah.
So, that's what we're faced right now with. That's a decision we're going to have to make. We move forward as the whole project. I don't think there's any questions of the merit, and it gets, people, I've never walked it myself, but I've been talking to a lot of people that have, and it, it's something that needs to happen. I know, uh, we've been talking about it for a number of years since I've been here, anyway, and, um-
Well, there's just so many sections of it, you know?
Yeah.
Band-aid one section, and then another section starts falling apart, so, I mean, the town made a commitment a number of years ago to try to repair these sections by sections. Um, let me ask you something, Zach. The alternative one, uh, where we just, you know, pay it outright, is bonding the only thing you're considering? Would, would, would you want to take a draw from the stabilization? It's all, it's a million dollars.
That's certainly a possibility as well. Um, that also could be the possibility in October. I mean, you could, you could- That also could be the possibility in October. I mean, you could, you could do the same purpose at that point, too.
Okay.
So, we could bond it now and then in October, if we have other plans for free cash. Again, I think we may have a healthy, healthy free cash year. We had the premium holiday, I want to remind you, and there's gonna be some big freedom money in there. We're very much on target with revenue, so it, it seems that we'll, we should be in a, in decent shape. And if we had to take care of it through free cash, I mean, that would probably be option number one, let's do that. But, yes, it's very much crossed our thought pattern that we absolutely could take from one of the stabilization accounts as well.
And I mean, the other-
We don't, we don't, sorry, we, we don't want to bond it. This is a tactic to, to secure the bid and then move forward.
Okay, I see, so you're just putting a placeholder in there.
Yes.
And, and I talked to Vani about this, too. I really, you know, for this kind of a project, I think the 10% contingency is, I mean, that's very conservative. I'd be surprised if you'd use a 10% contingency on a project like that. But, you know, who, who knows, a lot of it is underground and that type of thing. Well, before I turn it over to the board, I mean, just from a general, you know, conceptual point of view, I mean, Mike Santura always told us that whenever you rebid something, the price is always comes in higher. And I think on the projects that we've been involved in, you know, that, that's borne true. You know, to me, we, we know the work needs to be done, it's not gonna get any better. And it's not gonna get any cheaper, because I think we're entering the cycle now. And, and I saw a little bit of it, you know, with the youth center, I think we kind of squeezed in under the cycle. But now, construction is happening, prices are coming in higher. And I don't see it, you know, getting any lower in the foreseeable future, certainly not within the timeframe that we would be looking to do this to try to help the residents. So, you know, my, my, my thought process would be to do it all at once, not, not pay that double cost for mobilization and tackle it that way. But let me turn it over to the board. Uh, Bill?
Chairman, if I, if I-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I had, I failed to mention one possibility, that Rick, we, we've been trying to keep in touch with the state, with Senator Fatman. And there is definitely the environmental bond bill.
Yes.
It's a possibility, we're not banking on it by any stretch at all. Again, it might be some wishful thinking, but it's definitely a possibility.
And that's, what, is it in at 4 million for that?
It's in at 4, but we're more looking at 1.
We met, if I may, we met with Senator Fatman and Representative Fernandez last week, specifically on this topic. They informed us that the final commitment would probably not be made until May or June at the earliest. So, we will hopefully have a decision. Unfortunately, there was no talk of numbers. I'm not so confident that it will be 4 million, it'd be nice, but they are working hard on that for the project.
It could, could be 500,000, that would be tremendous, you know.
Right, but, but let me just point out, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are other sections of Godfrey Brook that needs to be done also.
Absolutely.
And that environmental bond bill, 4 million was supposed to be a sizable chunk of the rest of it.
Correct.
Okay, so if we were to get a million dollars from that-
We would not preclude.
I, I would hope to see that that would hit some of the other areas that, that still need to be worked on.
Exactly.
And, and deal with this independent.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Anything else before I turn it over to?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
No.
Uh, Bill?
Yeah, we've, we've had an opportunity to get a proposal in writing from Vani. You know, I, I, we've heard from you and from the finance side. You know, there's all, there's a piece of me that wants to hear from Scott and have him come before the board. But let me just say this. This has been something I've been talking about for a very long time, the threat of the brooks to the, to our community, to the residents, to the residential parcels that are alongside those brooks. Each of us throughout our time on the Board of Selectment, Brian's had the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to tour some of those areas. He lives in an area near, near the brook. We've seen what can happen, especially in '05 and '06 was, you know, phenomenal rain events. Now, if we say that's once in a hundred years, that's great, except we had two years back to back where those, those Godfrey Brook and those culverts were overwhelmed. We need to do this, so there's not a question about what to do. I did have a conversation with Scott, but I'd like to, I don't want to try to characterize his, his view, because he, he laid out some options where we could possibly wait, and he may make that recommendation. I don't know where he is right now for a portion of it. He doesn't want to lose funding for the FEMA reimbursement. He thinks we ought to go forward with at least a portion of it, but he, he also thinks there may be some benefit to some delay. And I'd like to hear him out on it. I, I called him just to see where we were on this and see where he was on option one, option two laid out by Vani. Because there's not a recommendation there. It's a good executive summary, but it's not the result of your discussion, Vani's discussion, and Scott Christofouli, the highway surveyor's discussion on what the recommended, recommendation is collectively. Because I think there's pieces of the puzzle that all need to fit together.
Yeah.
And Scott, Vani and yourself would be those pieces, and again, our opinion. So, I, I don't know if there's that opportunity.
Would you like them in the next meeting?
Yeah.
Do you want to get something in writing from them, or do you have them in?
You know, I'm okay with either.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with either. I've had a personal conversation, but I think the, the, the rest of the board would benefit from that discussion as well. But if he, if he laid out his, his thoughts in paper, that would be fine.
Do you have any preference, one way or the other?
No, what a chipper you prefer.
Perhaps if I secure a memo, and then obviously, we could certainly get them in the next meeting if, if need be with the board.
Sure, sure.
That would be April 27th, so we still have-
I, I have no problem with asking them to come, too.
Yeah.
I just didn't-
No, I think if it needs clarification, we could.
I did kind of tell them that they may be coming on the 27th anyway, so it's not gonna be a shock.
Let's have them, let's have them, let's have them.
Always good to see Scott, Vani and Zach.
Okay.
Okay, can you schedule that for us, please?
Sure, and I'll have to put something together, also, also, the written form-
So, we'll get them in here and then you can, you know, do more than just a report, right?
That'll work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Bill?
No, that, that's great.
On this, on this item?
On that item, no.
Uh, Will?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the only thing I was gonna ask you about was the environmental bond bill, but you brought that up at the end. I think ironically, it's a $40 million bond bill with 40 senatorial districts, so I'm certainly hoping that our district will be awarded something that's gonna help.
Yeah.
Some, I'm a simple guy, that's simple math, but I'm hoping that we're gonna get something. With that said, I also think over the next four years, if this could be, if it is gonna be parceled up into separate projects, obviously, that half a million dollars or more every year towards that is certainly gonna help. So, I think we need to obviously stay on our legislators for that, and, and I think that's what you folks were doing when you went in and met with them.
I think we have another meeting this week.
Actually, we're meeting Friday again with Senator Fatman, will be coming up. Previously made meeting that we had scheduled, rescheduled, so obviously, we're gonna talk some more about it.
We'll certainly stress how important it is to this community.
Well, and I think we're in a, and, we have an opportunity here on a very personal level that John Fernandez, Ryan and Secretary Beaton have all been colleagues in the House together for the last few years, so they all know each other. And I think those good relationships might be able to, hopefully, we can benefit from that. Because there are three guys that actually can get, hopefully, get some things done.
Yeah, absolutely.
But thank you very much. I always enjoy hearing from you and working with you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Okay. Going through the list of articles, and Rick, thank you for getting me the spreadsheet. It always allows me to see the warrant a little bit better. Are, are there any other articles that either of you have questions on, that you'd like to have someone come before us at, at the next meeting or so? Or additional written information? I'd just like to try to make sure that we, we all feel comfortable with the level of information that we have. Those were the two that I just kind of thought off the top of my head, the Article Two and then the Godfrey Brook.
Definitely Article Two, that needs a full discussion, for sure.
Okay, so we'll have them come in next meeting.
And I'll, I'll be here as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, along those lines, I appreciate you backtracking just a little bit to talk about Two and Thirty-Five, Article Two and Thirty-Five. I, you know, I think it would probably be a better meeting if we were able to lay out some parameters and some questions that we might have in preparation for that meeting. So, I have a couple. I can communicate those to Rick.
Sure, sure.
But I would also like to see our finance director, our acting finance director's position and questions. I want to get the benefit of your discussion as well.
Definitely.
If you're going to be here already for that meeting, that would work out great.
Yes.
You will, yeah.
So, I can, I can talk with you and the board members can talk. I think it's helpful to position for the Personnel Board the nature of the questions and the direction you're thinking ahead of time, so that they, it can be a better meeting.
I agree, and it'll streamline it a little bit, too, as well, yeah.
Yeah, and there's no reason to blindside them with surprise questions.
I agree, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, so I mean, if you have anything that, you know, was particular to you, just get it to Rick.
Okay, can, well, you may know this, the one, again, it's not the most glamorous one, but the senior center patio?
Yep.
When we went there for the candidate's day, I, I got to see it again, and I was under the assumption that something was already done about it. Wrong for me to assume. We closed, I'm just asking you, because obviously, I think you're, you still keep a pretty good eye on that, on that building. But, what, where are we with that?
Yeah, we need to do this quickly.
Because we can't afford to have some, I mean, I know you guys agree, but I couldn't believe, I mean, it needs to come up.
Right, it's, it's, it's a section of the cement. Rick, you've gotten quotes on it.
Yes, we have a quote. That, that quote will take care of the issues that we have, not only with the raised level as you walk directly into that patio area, but also if you go further in, if you're familiar with it, there's some brick there. That also needs to be adjusted, for lack of a better word, because there is some discrepancy there.
And people have already fallen in that area.
Right now, we've got it blocked off, and a nice thing about the project, too, we will now put something in front of that area where, you know, vehicles, I think, were getting in there, whether they be delivery or otherwise. And now we will not, no longer allow that to happen, so that this will be taken care of.
And along Will's note, Rick, are, are Will's concern for this, especially when we're talking about the seniors who are less sure-footed than, than many and maybe more sure-footed than myself, is there any reason why that can't be appropriated tomorrow under the emergency funds that the FinCom has in reserves and that we can't start that work immediately? It's $9,900. I don't know if we have a bidding.
See, I didn't even know the price, but that's why I asked, because I, I actually said that to Sue, how can she?
Why can't we do this tomorrow?
She's very nice.
And so that would be my question.
She's too kind sometimes.
Is there a reason why we can't go forward immediately?
I suppose the question is whether or not it's an emergency.
Well, if people are at risk-
Extraordinary and unforeseen is basically the nature of-
Terry's had some real flexibility with that emergency topic, but if we're talking about where people have a demonstrated ability to fall.
Yeah.
And we do.
We do, yeah.
There are claims against the town where they fall and where they have fallen in the area.
Yeah.
I don't see why, for the seniors of this community, we wouldn't be able to construct a rationale that makes this an emergency and allows us to go forward for $9,900 and not wait for town meeting. I think we owe it to the seniors, I think we owe it to the senior center, and I think we just need to move forward.
Yeah, it would, it would take a finance committee vote.
Just a vote of the FinCom.
I'd ask that, yeah.
I'd ask for that.
I mean, I, I don't know, it, it's a maintenance item.
We had some preliminary discussion.
I don't know of any claims that have risen out of it, though.
I guess the question is-
Not aware of any claims.
Talk to Terry.
I, I didn't know any claims on this particular item. It's, it's a raised piece, really. It's, it's a maintenance item and, and really, the cause of it was a leaky gutter, which was not repaired and the water leaked down.
We're also taking care of that issue.
You know, drained onto the exterior wall, into the ground, froze, the frost heaved it, and you've got a concrete panel that's out of the ground. So, so that's what it is. I mean, you, you know, it's, it's six year, half a dozen there, I suppose.
I'm just, you know, and I appreciate, I'm glad to hear Rick say this, Brian, that the area was barricaded.
Yeah, that's when I was there.
So, for immediate risk-
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And threat to people, but I don't see why we wouldn't go ahead and do this for the, the least sure-footed of the bunch of us. And, you know, I, I, you know, I would encourage people to, to think this way. When we have risk and uneven ground and there's potential for trip and fall, and especially as it relates to the senior center, I don't know why we wouldn't move on it quickly. That's just my thought. That's exactly, in my opinion, and I'll share with you my opinion, why funds exist, as an, an emergency nature, so that people can make decisions. We're asking people to make a $9,900 decision quickly. I'm okay with that and people having the authority. And I don't think they should look for further appropriation to go do that. The town has already made appropriation towards a fund that would take care of that. And I don't think it needs new money, that's another thing.
It, it, I mean, we'd have to just ask the FinCom to take a vote on it, really.
Yes, could we make that request?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'll, I'll be at the, unfortunately, at the Saturday meeting this upcoming Saturday.
As will I.
And I could, we could certainly bring that up if they want to act on it right then and there.
I, I don't think they've made an appropriation from that emergency fund in a number of years.
They did this year for the shoveling of the roof at the library, just because it came in so outrageous.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't remember an appropriation from that.
Definitely not last year. I think the last one I can remember was a minor amount for Vernon Grove, like four or five years ago.
Zach, I think it's responsible, because from my perspective, the town has already appropriated those dollars. We don't need new dollars to fix that concrete.
Yeah. So, I, I'll make sure we, I bring that forward and we get it secured right then and there.
That's what they want to do, that's fine, I mean-
And then you could just pass over the article if that's the action.
But I mean, it's, it's six year, half a dozen there, because then they'll, the FinCom will be looking to replenish that amount in their emergency fund in Article Four, so-
That's a tough argument for funds they haven't spent in years, so.
Yeah.
But I mean, hey, you know, as long as the work gets done and if, you know, that's what we want to do-
Yeah, let's get it done.
Just, just ask the FinCom to, to, to take a vote on that.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure of it, yeah.
Are there any other articles that you'd like to bring up in terms of any other information or appointments?
No, Thirty-Five, we're talking about passing over.
Thirty-Five is gone, yep.
Personnel, we're talking about meeting with them, and we're talking about expediting the senior center repair.
Yep.
I'm good, and with that, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion, maybe that can further discussion, that for at least, I'll start with the group, the Board of Selectment articles, I recommend that this board vote favorable to support those articles, at least from the Board of Selectment, we can take up others.
Okay, if I could just have you hold that motion for one second. Will, are there any articles that, that you would, would like any further information on? Or maybe have someone come before us or anything like that?
No, I think I'm pretty-
A lot of them, we talked about, we've talked about Godfrey Brook, Louisa Lake, we've talked about-
And you said that was being passed over?
Yes, Louisa Lake is gonna be passed over until we get the consultant's report. The police station boilers, I think it is what it is. The senior center tax relief, we've talked about that before.
Okay.
The water company, I mean, anything, if there's something you see that you need something more, just, you know.
Everything seems pretty familiar to me, except something else that might be simple, 28 sign regulations?
Oh, that's-
Under Board of Selectment?
Okay, yes, that, that's a proposed change to basically allow the departments that have jurisdiction over a particular piece of land to give permission for a sign.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
The only monetary figure on there that could be subject to change besides Godfrey Brook is the supplementing the injured on duty. That could be a little bit higher.
Yeah, and again, that's, is what it is. You know, that's not necessarily discretionary.
We pay for our public safety people who are injured on duty.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's okay. Okay.
We'll have a solid number for town meeting floor.
And, and, and don't just contain yourself just to the Selectment articles. If there's other ones here, even, you know, from the highway, if there's something you want, just let us know.
Okay, great.
And we can get people in on that. Okay, so, can I go back? Was there a motion?
There's a motion to support the articles that are presented here on our roll-up sheet as sponsored by the Board of Selectment. I just wanted to start there, it's, it's easier, I think.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. Any further discussion on this item, the town meeting warrant? You don't have to decide, you know, I mean, tonight, I mean, if you, if something pops up, you, you know, just send Rick an email or whatever and, or let me know, whatever, and then, you know, if we have to get someone in, we'll do that. If we need a memo, we'll do that.
Okay, great.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else from you?
Not at this time, Nick.
Okay. Well, Zach, thank you very much for sticking around and being here.
No problem.
I know you got a ride back and stuff, but I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay.
Gentlemen, have a good night.
Nothing like 16-hour days, is that?
Thanks, Zach.
Nothing like 16-hour days?
Yeah. Okay, is there any other items under old business?
There is, Mr. Chairman. One other thing I'd like to bring up under old business that may be a different idea, but it's certainly under old business. This board has talked at length over the, the years that I've been a member of the Board of Selectment regarding task force. Task force and specifically housing, housing situations. You know, I- You know, listening to various people and going through my own thoughts about what we might be able to do differently, I'd like to make a recommendation and put it in the form of a motion. What I'd like to do is make a motion that town administrator lead that task force activity, not necessarily going to the homes or going to the businesses, but what I'm concerned about is, at various times, people have represented that sometimes they're too busy. What I'd like to make sure this has leadership, this has a focus, this has a single point of contact. I'd like to also add to that, that I'd like to see, similar to how Boston reports its, its potholes. They have a website, they have a web link that somebody could go to if there are concerns about property that may not be in compliance or that they think has become suddenly a boarding house that was a single-family home, which we've seen that many times in town, that both, we, we have both a website and a phone, phone number that people can call, where they can leave a message, and that we track it, similar to an IT trouble ticket. You know, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to see the town administrator call together the various boards to have, or departments, to have a meeting and refresh that list, because I'm not sure it's getting the attention it deserves, and I'm not sure it's getting the attention that this board would like to put on businesses, and specifically landlords of, of houses that are making illegal changes, or certainly making illegal boarding houses. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we have Rick head that, again, not necessarily go for the purposes of going to the buildings, but to lead that effort, to call those meetings, and to keep this board abreast of all the activity associated with that task force. I'd like to make a motion that we also, within that, have a, a website and a telephone number that people can call into, that we track, and give each of those numbers, and we, we give the appropriate time and attention.
Okay, so you're talking about the residential housing bylaw?
Yes.
Because you mentioned businesses, but you're not talking about businesses.
Well, if, if somebody has an issue with businesses not being in compliance, we have combination businesses and, and housing. So there are some of those that people have brought to my attention as well, some of those along Main Street, where they're doing the right thing at the, at the downstairs level and the wrong thing upstairs. So I don't want to limit it, I want, and what I want to say is task force activity, and sometimes task force is looking at things, not just with residential, but also business-related.
So you're talking about zoning and town bylaw compliance?
That's correct.
Okay, so, yeah.
Make that part of that task force, and I'd like to ask that the town administrator head that activity.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, the motion is to have the town administrator head up the zoning bylaw violation task force.
Correct.
And also establish a website.
Well, it's both a website and a phone number, I'd like people, if they're not computer savvy, to be able to call in and say, hey, look, this is what's going on at the property next to me, and I'd like, you know, that to be allocated out to the appropriate department, and I'd like to have Rick as the focal point for this board.
Okay, Gene, do you have that motion down, do you squared away on that?
So, yes.
Okay, before I get to Will.
So it's three components.
Yeah, any, any comment on that, or is there anything that needs to be fine-tuned on that, or?
No, I think it's clear.
Okay.
I'll have to talk to, you know, what we need to do for the website, but I can't imagine that can't be done.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the phone number.
Sure, sure, I, well, I think that's just publicizing, grab a number, whether it's selectmen's office, or whomever.
Probably be, yeah.
Well, hopefully, it's not the selectmen's office, but it can be a number that.
Yeah, it may be a number.
Just a voicemail can be left.
Message as such, yeah.
Okay, all right, Will, any comments, questions?
No, I'll, I'll second that, and, for discussion, and. There's a lot happening. I guess, coming off the, the campaign trail most recently, this is definitely something that people are still talking about. I think we've come leaps and bounds to where we were a few years ago, but I think it's also something that, you know, unfortunately, bad habits can be cyclical, and, you know, when you just have one person responsible for this over in this department, and the board of health on this department, I think it's an awful lot, so I'm curious to see the, the result of this. And I think probably having a single point of contact and a link on the website, probably a very positive idea, and show some leadership coming out of here for that as well, so I like that.
Okay.
Sorry, I was kind of thinking out loud here, working through.
I know I surprised members of the board, but it's, it's actually old business, it's been, it's something we've been dealing with for a very long time. And, and I'm concerned it doesn't have a single point of focus and a single owner responsible for it. And if we decide to change that in six months or a year, that's fine, but I would like is, to get, for this to get Rick's leadership and guidance, and make sure those meetings are happening on a regular basis, and that we get the results of those, minutes of those meetings.
Okay, so as long as we're squared away with the motion, essentially, we'd be looking for the town administrator to sort of spearhead and quarterback the zoning bylaw violation task force, and to probably beef up the public input connection point. Okay.
Any other things you have to bring, suggestions, please bring them back, yeah.
Will, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on that, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. Do you have any other items, Phil?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will, do you have any items under old business? Okay.
Thank you.
Next meeting, you will, right? All right, I, I, I just have one item that I'd like to bring up, and I'd like to ask the town administrator to do a little bit of work, too. There was considerable talk about the Community Development Block grant, and, you know, the last time we, we tried for it, we were not successful. I believe there are still funds appropriated for the consultant to participate in that grant application, and it's my understanding that the way that process is working, it's regionalization. So I would like to have Rick reach out to some other surrounding communities, whether it's Franklin, Bellingham, Mendon, Hopedale, whatever, to see if there's a partnership that we could do to submit a joint CDBG grant. I, I think we're still timely, I think the application has to roll in by February, of course, there's a lot of preliminary work before that, but the idea would be to try to get the restoration of that downtown partnership person with the CDBG money, and hopefully, we, we could do that with, with a regional partner. Sort of concurrent with that, and, and thinking about the discussion that we've had about the Main Street businesses, I would like to have a memo from the town planner and the planning board with updated thoughts on the residential bylaw that was submitted to town meeting a few years ago in terms of residential housing on Main Street in a targeted area, third floor, upper floors of some buildings. It's not a big number, but I think it was a step in the right direction in terms of generating foot traffic on Main Street, which is, I think, going to be the main driver to bring back businesses, stores, that kind of stuff that a lot of people have talked about. I would also like to have the town administrator contact the town engineer and the police chief to do an inventory of our parking situation on Main Street with suggestions for potential increased parking in any area, including possible locations that the town could take by eminent domain to consider for additional parking. I'd like to get a memoranda from the Highway Surveyor in terms of what his plans are, both short-term and long-term, for Main Street, even if it's something small as, you know, relining the crosswalks, the curvings, whatever. And also, I'd like to reach out to Milford Regional Medical Center, we did this quite a few years ago, it was effective, although I think some of the ambulance companies didn't get the memo, and they could reach out to the ambulance providers to try to reduce the siren as it goes all along Main Street, typically, that, that really should be just at the intersections, but, and lots of times, it's some of the out-of-town ambulances or fire trucks that come through. It's, it's, it's really, you know, quite alarming, I, I think unnecessary to a large degree, and I know the last time we reached out to the hospital, they did speak to the providers, and it subsided a little bit. So obviously, you can see, you know, I'm trying to target a little bit groundwork, long-term, to see if we can take a closer look at Main Street and see whatever help we can, we can provide.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
You, you gave us a great deal, I'd like to second that motion for discussion, so that we could break it up a little bit. Great suggestion as it relates to looking at, having a consultant look at regionalization of Community Development Block, Block Grant. It's a, it's a different approach, it's one that other communities have tried, and I appreciate the fact that you brought that forward. Parking inventory, again, great suggestion, I'd be supportive of that. Highway, get an idea from Scott Chrisfully, what his plans are for Main Street. The area, certainly in front of Frank's appliance to the hospital, is certainly a challenge. It's probably one of the better SUV test tracks there are around for vehicles. So, you know, I'd like to be supportive of that, with regard to the motion with respect to residential housing going to the planning board. You know, I'm not, I'm not convinced, I, I can tell you this, I'm not convinced this community needs more housing. I think the housing stock and availability of housing stock is certainly a challenge, but I, but I'm seconding the, for the purposes of discussion, the motion that you made related to it, simply so that we can have the discussion. Rick, Will hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in, so, but I can tell you, at this point, I've not seen any information that would put me in favor of support, supporting additional housing stock, and certainly on, on the Main Street.
Well, I mean, that, that's okay, and I, and I'm not looking for a motion either for or against at this point, but I would like to bring to this board a level of information so we can have that discussion. If it's not something that the board, you know, can, can support, that's okay, but to be honest, you know, what's been happening on Main Street up until this point, at least in some person, some people's opinion, hasn't been working. So, you know, I think that we, we've got to start thinking a little bit differently, looking at things. The planning board did come up with a bylaw, I think it was in 2011, I, I don't remember exactly, you know, how far it went. I think it got passed over at town meeting, but I'd just like to see that.
It was actually defeated at town meeting.
Defeated?
Yeah.
I'd just, I'd just like to see that bylaw again, and get a memo, and just, you know, get that into the mix of discussion. So I, I didn't really make a motion, these are just things that I'd like to have the town administrator put forward to us, and then we can, you know, evaluate them, address them, and, you know, see, see what we want to do. And, and if, obviously, if either of you have any other ideas, you know, I mean, it's time to really try to look at some meaningful, I think.
Agreed.
Steps to, 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 to try to, you know, make Main Street as viable as possible.
Yeah, I think parking is, you hit on one of the key points, parking is huge.
And I don't know what's possible, you know, maybe nothing's possible, but, you know, we've got to inventory, we've got to take a look at it. You know, we, we've got to be very, very judicious and careful in terms of surrendering spaces. You know, to be honest, that the state Route Sixteen project wasn't particularly helpful in that regard. We lost a number of parking spaces, and that impacts businesses, no, no question about it. So those are just some of the thoughts I had, to maybe try to, you know, put us in the right direction and see if we can start a discussion about what we might want to do in terms of help out Main Street a bit. Okay, so.
Brian?
Yep.
No, I actually am looking forward to having that conversation with every one of the topics that you brought up. I know that that town meeting article did get defeated, but I think, again, it's a few more years down the road, I think things change, and I think that, you know, I, for one, anyway, an additional set of years would like to very much hear about that, and seeing if that's going to help, if, obviously, if people are living on Main Street, maybe they'll treat Main Street a little differently, and, you know, even, fortunately, even speaking of eminent domain, but if something isn't helping this town look as good as it should, and we can supply additional parking for the businesses that are down there, and the ones that have been succeeding all these years, maybe that would also lead to more businesses going down there, so I just wanted to voice support on every, on every one of those topics, so.
Thank you, it's, it's really just a kicking-off point, you know, to try to get some of these items on the table, and then see if we want to pursue anything, or, or any of them from that point on.
Yeah, I think what people, and a, a part of my concern is, I think what people don't realize is we already have a great deal of housing on Main Street.
There is, there is, it's, it's not a novel idea.
It's, it's not necessarily beneficial in, in a lot of those cases, in fact, where some of our complaints come from. So maybe we, that'd be a good, good kickoff point to talk about it.
Well, that, that, that's okay, and I don't want that to overshadow everything else, to be honest with you, the, the main focus that I want to do would see if we could match up with another community to try to access CDBG again.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we get a point person in, then it'll just give us a better focal point in terms of trying to organize some of these things.
Great.
Okay, so with that, let's move along to new business, and we have second-hand pool table license renewals. Bill, if you could perhaps read the renewal of second-hand licenses?
Sure, we have Posituary and Gifts, one ninety-six East Main Street, Unit Forty-eight, we have Central Street Resale at Two Central Street, Marshalls of Milford, one fifty-four West Street, Mr. Nascimento Mendez of Mendez Antiques, one seventeen East Main Street. We have Nathan Jewelers, one fifty-seven Main Street, Gregory Bowser, doing business as Pandora's Box, fourteen Main Street. We have TJ's Collectible Inc. at one sixty Main Street, and then we have This and That Thrift Shop, two sixty Main Street, that recommend renewal of their second-hand license.
Motion made and seconded to renew the four said second-hand licenses. Any further discussion? I would be abstaining from Mr. Nascimento Mendez, TJ Collectibles Inc., and This and That Thrift Shop. All those in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, except for the abstentions that I mentioned on those three. Will, if I could ask you to read the renewal of pool table licenses?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion for the renewal of pool table licenses at Fun Zone of Milford LLC, doing business as Pins at one ten South Main Street, the Hoboken Citizens Club at two fifty-two Central Street, and Tai Tran doing business as Lucky Nine at one nineteen East Main Street.
Motion made and seconded for the renewal of pool table licenses as indicated, any discussion, if not, all those in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. Bill, could you do the last one, please?
Yeah, we have a motion to renew Fun Zone of Milford LLC doing business as Pins for bowling alley license at one ten South Main Street.
Motion made to renew the bowling alley license for Fun Zone of Milford LLC, seconded, any further discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that, too, is unanimous. Okay, the second item that we have is correspondence from Harold Rhodes requesting that the board approve Jennifer Walsh as a member of the Commission on Disability.
Be happy to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Be happy to second.
Motion made and seconded, I think all three of us know Jen very well, she's an extraordinary person, and she'll be a great asset on the Commission on Disability. That is unanimous. We have a very ominous letter from WMRC seeking to proclaim Louisa Lake off-limits for fishing for just twenty-four hours preceding the annual free fishing derby for kids on April eighteenth. The Department of Fisheries and Wildlife will be delivering five hundred trout at noon on Friday the seventeenth, and Dick Ferrucci wants every one of those trout.
And something we've done every year for the benefit of, they've never seen, somebody hasn't heard this before, I'd be happy to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion, if not, all in favor, that's unanimous. We have correspondence from someone named William E. Kincaid Junior, obviously a rabble-rouser, resigning from the Finance Committee effective immediately, doing so will allow the Board of Selectmen to make an appointment at timely manner. Want to make a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion made.
With regret.
With regret, and seconded, all those in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. Bill, do you have any items of new business?
No, no, the only thing, I was thinking as we were going through the appointments, new business, we've still got an item on the agenda for Woodland School Building.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I missed that, sorry, I missed that, yes, and of course, that was vacated. Selectman DeBattalmaia served on that committee in his possession, in his position as selectman. So I would defer to the next senior member in the committee, Bill, would you?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Do I make a motion?
Want to make a motion, sure.
Can I make a motion to appoint Selectman Bill Buckley to the Woodland School Building Committee?
I would second that.
Seconded, any discussion, if not, any opposed, if not, all in favor. Seconded. Any discussion? If not, any opposed? If not, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Okay, and then to your question, Mr. Chairman, regarding new business, while we're talking about so many appointments, I know that with the, there's certainly been difficulty getting quorums and we've had a person that's been longstanding on the FinCom. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeff Nero to the, from the Talent Bank to the FinCom. You know, as recently as this weekend, we were at the school building groundbreaking. Mr. Shane had approached me, the chairman approached me about backfilling some appointments. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeff Nero to one of the openings.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Brian, Mr. Chairman, what I was going to ask was, again, from the Talent Bank, because I got a lot of heat for resigning and being, adding to the vacancies from our colleagues on the FinCom. So I'm glad we actually appointed a member tonight. But, and I know who Jeff is. I don't know him, I don't know him well. But I'm sure he'll do a great job. But I was hoping to make an appointment to someone to fulfill my unexpired term. And he's, and Michael Source, who you folks appointed to the CIC a couple of years ago, has been in the Talent Bank for two years. And he really wants a shot and I think he'd do a good job. So I'd like to make that motion if you guys could support that.
Okay, and we have his information on file. He's on the CIC.
He's on the CIC. You guys did appoint him a couple of years ago to the CIC.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Michael Source to the, do you know how much time you have?
I think it's, I think it's two years, maybe, out of the three.
Okay, to the spot vacated by Will?
I'd be happy to second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
I think that's still, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, any opposed? That's unanimous.
I was going to say, I think that still leaves at least one vacancy. So, I mean, hopefully you folks can find someone, because they're really having a hard time making quorums.
They have a member that's sick, who's had extended leave. And so I think it's difficult for them to organize and maintain quorum, so hopefully this will help.
Well, it should.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, it should. Okay, great. Any other new business?
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
Will, do you have any other items?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and let's see, we took care of Will's letter. The last thing that we have is the report from the Police Department. And Will, just by way of information, this is a quarterly report that we received from the Police Department which outlines activity at all the licensed establishments. And generally, we just kind of go through this and see if there's anything that raises any eyebrows or anything that any member would like to take any further action on. So with that, let me turn it over to Bill. Is there anything that's?
Well, you know, while we would hope to have a completely blank report and no police calls to any of our licensed establishments, you know, I don't see anything here that I would want to talk to the chief about specifically. What I'd like to see is, this is the first of a quarterly report for this year. What I'd like to see is how this trends through the second quarter. I'm comfortable with the information. I appreciate this coming from the chief. Keeps us abreast of what's happening.
Will, is there anything that you see?
No, after all these years of watching you folks at the meetings talk about this, it was good to actually see the hard copy. And I know, Brian, rightfully so, we're, you know, kind of getting tired to seeing the hypodermic needles. I know a couple of meetings ago, and of course, that's what jumps off the page again.
Yeah, it does.
Again, I'm not sure, and I think that's what the frustrating part is. I'm not sure how we fix that. But it is, it is very frustrating and they're being found everywhere.
That was at the McDonald's on South Main Street. And actually, the Police Department did meet with the management of McDonald's and we've got a couple of memos on that. And I believe they have changed their operations so that I think that they're a little bit tighter. And in fact, that's what I was going to bring up, because the only thing that popped out to me is the Dunkin' Donuts on 31 Main Street. And again, we have two instances of hypodermic needles, one in the men's room, another one in the trash, also a bag of marijuana. I mean, I would ask the police chief to have the same conversation with the management at Dunkin' Donuts to try to sharpen up their operations to increase their awareness of this type of activity, the individuals that might be engaging in this activity and precautionary steps that can be taken. You know, because again, Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, it's not an establishment that, you know, you would expect to have just adults at late hours. I mean, young people go there, kids go there. I see it in the same vein as a McDonald's where, you know, we really do, you know, have a heightened duty of awareness, or at least the management should, to stop this kind of activity. So if you could ask the
Absolutely.
Police chief to reach out to Dunkin' Donuts on 31 Main Street to see what can be done on there. Okay, let's see, we have informational correspondence. There's a monthly report from the Town Engineer. And those are all of the items that I have. Is there anything else, Bill, that you'd like to talk about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we received, I think in our box or through mailings, information regarding, from the citizens of Milford regarding a Milford Beautification Day. I just wanted to make note that citizens of Milford are holding a beautification day Saturday, April 25th, reenish shine from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that all interested citizens that are interested in helping meet across at the parking lot, the municipal lot, across from Sacred Heart Church. And I also wanted to convey a note of thanks to the citizens of Milford for helping. You know, they're certainly involved in their community, so we've had the flyers. They were provided to us. The second piece of information that was correspondence to this board came from the Milford School Department, but I think it's, the issue is much broader than just the schools and its impact to the town funding and to the staff and students of the school department. So what I would like to do, this specifically came from Mike Walsh, the chairman of the Milford School Committee, asking the Massachusetts Associations of School Committee to get involved and to support their request for an act establishing funds to provide for increase in English language learners in school districts. And that was submitted by our own representative, John Fernandez. If the bill becomes law, provide relief to school districts. What I'd like to ask is that we send out a letter similar to members of the Board of Selectmen and town administrators, administrators, managers to see if they could also get behind it. I think it's our responsibility to try to get behind this. It's, I've read the legislation that Representative Fernandez has put in place. I find it thoughtful and I think it would be incredibly helpful to the community of Milford if we could get behind it.
So where do you want that letter voted, Bill?
To
MMA?
Yeah, to the MMA and specifically to the communities that may have same type of challenges we have.
Well, you're looking for something from the MMA, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So correspondence to the MMA, supporting that legislation. Okay, very good. Will, is there anything that you have?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. So what do you think? Going to stick around?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm back for a second meeting.
We got a lot, we did a lot of good stuff today. Very excited.
Good, good. All right, we do have an executive session for collective bargaining, so it entertain a motion.
Motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining. Be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. Second that.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I have to ask your advice. I am going to be recusing myself from that. Can I still vote to go into executive session? Okay, then I'll second that.
Yep, yep. Okay, motion made and seconded to go into executive session for collective bargaining. Roll call, vote, Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Will? Aye, too, voting affirmative. We will not be returning to the open session. Thank you and good night.